Welcome, everybody. It is 6:05. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, Tuesday, May 16th. I would like to apologize for the late start. We -- technical difficulties, but if everybody would like to join me in saluting the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which extends one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for your patience. So we're going to open the meeting with the board appointments for the Recreation Commission. Christine Kuzminsky. Jim?
Yes, this is to fill a vacancy on the Rec Commission, and Mrs. Kuzminsky was the lone applicant interested in the position, so we're asking that you appoint her tonight.
So Christine's been on the Rec Commission for many years.
Reappointment?
Yeah, it's a reappointment.
Okay.
But, you know, it's worth saying Christine does an unbelievable job for us on Rec, and she's kind of the brains of the operation behind all those senior trips that we vote on, on the Lauren article, so thank goodness for Christine, and I'd like to move to a reappoint Christine to the Rec Commission for an additional three-year term. Is that a 33-year term?
Thirty-three, yes.
Three-year term for now, Christine, term to expire in April 2026.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mike Conley. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that would be unanimous, thank you. Citizens' input. Is there anybody out there that would like to ask any questions or has anything to talk about, that they would like to talk about, that is on the agenda for this evening?
The protocol is on the website, accessible to the community.
I don't see anybody, so we will go past that, and we're on to administration. Trish, you're up, please. ARPA update.
I'll make this short. I only have 32 pages, no kidding. And again, it's, you know, the pollen's killing me. My husband says it's because I talk too much, and I know you won't agree with him. Okay, so this is an ARPA report based on our work, our last work meeting, and just to remind everybody and people in TV land, the U.S. Treasury guidelines is what the work group must follow. According to federal legislation, we can use the funds to respond to COVID-19, which, contrary to popular belief, it is still here, even though the feds say it's gone, so be careful. Any public health emergency, negative economic impacts, we can use it to respond to workers performing essential work, which includes, obviously, our first responders, it included our eligible election workers, as long as they weren't an elected official, and included transfer station and highway. We also can use it for revenue loss, for government services, including upgrades on equipment and vehicles. And they were very clear, they gave us this formula that we had to use for revenue loss, and, you know, I think you had to be a major accountant, and then they realized everybody was having trouble, so they dialed it down a few notches so we actually could understand what they meant. So now we know we can use it for our vehicles, our buildings, our recreation areas, and also investments in water, sewer, broadband, anything to do with technology and our infrastructure. Our work group that was present for the meeting yesterday was Selectman Joe Simone, Chief Jewitt, Chief Elgodino, Jack Kozak, myself, and our guest was Bob Marshawn, one of our selectmen, our chairperson. The work group, so just to give you an idea, we continue to discuss things. I'm s-- what?
Jim was there.
Oh, but he's on the committee, so, Town Administrator, yes. Sorry.
Interim.
We're not letting you go. Yes, Jim O'Mara was there, our Town Administrator that we have handcuffed to the desk over there. So we continue to discuss our infrastructure, our buildings, our technology, medical equipment, obviously, recreation areas, we all know are suffering, you've heard, you've talked about it, we've talked about it, our security equipment, we've talked about solar panels, we've talked about our town website having a facelift, we've talked about portable lighting that could be used for emergencies or even during events and fairs. And to remind everybody again in TV land, we only do the research, this work group does the research, and we bring it to the Board of Selectmen and the public for comment so that we have transparency, and we look forward to your comments, and then the Board of Selectmen will decide exactly what we're doing. Recently, the work group discussed, recommended to the Board of Selectmen, and I actually put these in front of your places. Did I give one to you, Jim?
Thank you.
I just thought it was easier to give you a hard copy of what we were talking about. So we did talk about purchasing or recommending to purchase five new barbecue grills for the town beach and one for Granny Park. The estimated cost, as you'll see in front of you, is about $355 apiece, which would total $1,775 plus shipping. We'll further research vendors and give you an actual invoice once we want, you know, if you decide that you want to do this. And in addition, we looked at an in-ground mount, although somebody's telling me that we may have to look for tables like we have down there, so they're movable, but that's something that you can talk about. Matt, you're on Rec, you might want to make that recommendation. The picture that you have is an in-ground mount, a 46-inch round picnic table metal, and that was $1,300. If you're, again, if you're in favor of this as the board, let me know, the ARPA Committee know, or all of us know, and we'll get you some actual invoices for your next meeting if that's something that you want to do. Obviously, it's important because the beach is going to be opening soon. We also, the ARPA group also talked about the money that we've got set aside for the parking lot at Granny Park. That's still out there, we know we've got to do that. Mike Pavaro has said it's been premature for him, supply costs are still going up. I think we had put aside $37,000 for that, but we'll keep you posted on that as we move forward to see actually what we're going to do with the parking lot and Granny Park renovations that you have on your plate. We also discussed security cameras in various town buildings. We're recommending that the Town Hall and the transfer station have security cameras like the ones we already put at the town beach and Granny Park. We'd like to pursue this and provide invoices to you again at your next meeting if you're okay with it. The rough cost would be about $1,700 a location. The fire chief also reminded us there's still one security camera at the fire station that has never been installed, and I'm going to call about it and kind of get on them. In addition to the cameras, we discussed the alarm system at Town Hall. It's not programmed properly, and it, after the chief did, the police chief did a check on it, we highly recommend that the board consider having somebody look at it, it's not working correctly. We also continue to talk about communication issues with our portable radios for police, fire, and highway. We're still waiting for our antenna to arrive at the PD, and the fire chief also spoke with the Sheriff's Department, and he spoke to two other people actually this morning to get more information about maybe getting an additional antenna, oh, I'm losing my voice, it's wonderful, I know, on the roof of the fire station, so we'll keep you posted on that. We also discussed Station 2, it's in need of really a lot of repairs, that's the one down in the junction. After our discussion, the Town Administrator said he's going to research our lease just to see if there's language in there about, for us, allowing us to do repairs on a building we don't own, so we'll let you know about that, it's in pretty rough shape, though. We also discussed the Butler Building, which is also kind of what we call the Highway Department. It has no sink. If you haven't had a field trip over there lately, you really should go over there. The toilet overflows, and it leaks all over the floors. It's horrible. It's one, it's something that because it's our buildings, it's part of our infrastructure, and because we're in a loss revenue situation in a default budget, we also can use money for that, or maybe it comes out of government buildings, but we have to address the sink and the toilet over there. And lastly, we discussed many topics regarding our town vehicles, some disrepair, police, fire, and highway. We've got to come up with some creative ways to accommodate the town needs in a default budget, so we spent a lot of time talking about this, and we'll bring forward, I'm sure that you'll have questions as well. And lastly, let me remind, we are in a local emergency is an understatement, and I thank Selectman Matt because you always say that, it is so true. This is critical for us to realize and the residents to realize, we are in an emergency. So any use or any grants that we can find to help improve our government services will be a plus. And that's it. See, not too bad.
So Trish, while you're there, if you would be so kind to, for the next meeting, we need it the Thursday before the meeting.
Okay.
If you could make sure Robin has that PO for the cost of installing those security cameras.
Okay. Beautiful security.
Which are needed, please, so that we can all take a look at that.
Okay.
The only other thing I wanted to add, you mentioned that the money set aside for the paving of Greedy Park is, we've been talking about that one for a long time.
Excepting it wasn't paving. We talked about, and we talked in the meeting about, okay, go ahead.
My understanding is it's paving, what's your understanding?
So, no, it's what Mike calls, and I might say it wrong, it's stone dust and rap. It's similar to what he does on trails and in parking lots. He said the actual paving would be a huge cost that we, we don't have enough money left to do that, and that's why he wasn't going to do it. It was only going to be like a stone dust and what he called a rap. Is it pieces of asphalt you contracted?
It's recycled asphalt, so like, it gets hard after a while, but it's not like pavement.
Yes, and that's what he said, and I double-checked with him today just to make sure, and I looked in my notes to make sure, hey, I'm a blond senior, maybe I forgot something, but he did say, yeah, we never really talked about paving, it was stone dust and that rap. Yes, but that is--
That's the first I've heard of this. Understood if, because the question I've been asking for a long time is, and you just answered it, is paving like just too expensive?
Is it on?
He did that on purpose.
I know, I did. How's that? Cool. So, and I had said, if paving is too just, too insurmountable, then we don't do that. This sounds like it's a backup plan, but my thing is, what can we do? Because we lean on Mike for a lot of stuff, right? He's here, he knows his pavement, and he knows his, and everything's like, oh, we'll always ask Mike, we'll always ask Mike. Well, believe it or not, Mike actually has a real job in real life.
He does, and then he gets paid for.
Then he gets paid for, and so what can we do, like, who can we, you know, do we need to start getting quotes or whatever? Because I'm setting a goal right now in public. My time on the board is up in March, I'd like to see this done before I get off the board, because--
Yep.
I swear to God, if we go back on YouTube, we can find the same conversation from last May, been talking about it for a long time. I'm not saying it's anybody's fault, but how do we take the logjam out of this? It's probably got nothing to do with you, Trish, right? You're just doing the ARPA thing, but who can we, maybe I'm volunteering myself--
No, it's not even that, you authorize Jim to put out an RFP to have the parking lot.
Exactly.
It's almost, it's called reclaimed because you're not going to be paving it, you're going to even everything out and put a new layer of stone dust down, you know, and so there's tons of companies that do that, but Jim would be the person that would put the RFP together to put that out, to have companies bid on it, taking it off of Mike's plate.
Exactly, you're reading my mind, but typically when we do the RFP, and Diane will bag me up on this, our next call will be to Mike to give us the information to do the RFP, so Mike is still getting pulled into it. So what's the answer?
I think he is capable of doing it without Mike.
Are we putting the cart before the horse because we have some plans over there to expand the parking lot?
Right, that's where I was going.
And that's what I'm saying, too, is, you say cart before the horse, you know, what I'm talking about is probably a sub-project of a greater project.
Right.
I wouldn't want to have that project done and then the grounds be damaged and have to be redone again.
No, absolutely, but so the RFP should be of a greater scope, I think.
So I don't know if this will help you. Conservation has walked down there because we're working around wetlands, the engineer has walked down there, Mike and I and the engineer have walked down there, so that we know, how many, we already know 100 feet of trees going in, so when you go, when you drive in on the right-hand side of, when you're going into the entrance, on the right-hand side, immediately in the close area to the road, we've got some wetlands there. So we're going, it's about 25 feet in, say, from Heath Street, let's say, then from therein, we're going 100 feet of trees, all the way up to the far end, and the thought process was, number one, not only will that help parking, but perhaps, and of course, last year we didn't have this conversation about the skateboard park, but now there's new things happening, this may be the time, and Mike Pavaro has already thought about this, that when we expand, when we cut those 100 feet of trees for, I think it's 100 feet by 100 feet, maybe the skateboard park should be moved away from all the little kids so that nobody gets hurt, and, you know, we have little kids in tricycles that aren't listening to language of teenagers, which of course is what it is, and the fact that the engineer came down and Conservation came down, Mike is all prepared to do this, I'm not saying don't go out to an RFP, but I'd hate to have his time now wasted because he's done this much work. He knew last year he wasn't going to get to it, and the only reason why is because of the culvert situations and the flooding that we had. So he knew, and he kept saying to us, I'd ask him about it, and he said, it's not going to happen this year, Trisha, it's just not. So it's obviously up to you guys, but just to put that out there, that he's already spent a great deal of time, he talked about doing, actually today, a conceptual plan of the property that not only Conservation, but the town owns over there, and he also talked about doing it at the beach, just to see what makes sense, what we could do to make it bigger, to make the residents happy, and to make that park really what it should be. It could be wonderful.
Right, so I don't want to boil the ocean either.
That's okay.
I don't, I don't want to make this a big, you know, project, but what you guys are saying is absolutely valid, that you don't want to, you don't want to do all of this stuff and realize, geez, we should have taken down these trees or we, but at the same time, I don't want to, you talk about conceptualizing the whole park, right? The fields are what they are, I would want to say. So I'm still back to the question, what is the best way, because you're absolutely right, a year ago, we said it's not going to happen this year, so now it's 2023, what is the best way to make sure it happens in 2023?
I mean, it's in your hands.
And I'm kind of looking at you, but it's really--
No, 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 I'm looking at you.
Yeah.
I have employed a strategy in previous communities where during the paving season, it's not uncommon to approach the successful bidder to resurface your tennis courts, your basketball courts, and this might be in their wheelhouse, and they're already staged here, so you don't get that added cost of having to move your equipment around. So I did run it by Mike, and he said that he would put that in the ear of the successful contractor who's going to do the paving this season, and I don't know when that's going to start, so I don't want to give you a date, but I'm presuming that in May, we should be seeing some activity in town regarding paving, and that's the time you can ask that question. It undoubtedly ends up being a lower cost than any other competition because they're already in town.
Yeah, right.
But Mike has explained to me that sometimes he has hard getting more than one bid, because the projects are such small scale compared to 93 and that.
Sounds like you do want Mike here at the next meeting, then, and we put on the agenda.
We could do that.
Well, do, but are we, are we giving Mike too much? You know what I mean? Like, is, I mean, granted, he can speak for himself and say, I'm too busy, but do we need to hire an engineer? Do we need to do all that stuff that, do we need a project manager, right? So ARPA, to me, ARPA's writing the check, so it should be off of the ARPA Committee's hands, right? Like, and it should move on to, do we have to hire somebody, like?
Could we use ARPA money for an engineer?
Oh, absolutely, yep, absolutely.
And they would do the whole, the whole park plan?
Yep, and the engineer, when I spoke to him to come down, I explained that ARPA money can pay for the engineer, so he's already, Mike Vignali has already been down. So he, he's already got an idea. Am I missing something?
No, she was on her way up and you answered her question.
She's handcuffed to this desk, too. So, yeah, he's been down, he knows what we're trying to do, and he and Mike have talked about, you know, he actually said, you know, depending on who you have doing it, sometimes you don't need to spend the money on an engineer, and I said, yeah, but if we have neighbors around that all of a sudden end up with water on their yard because we altered the topography, at least we've got an engineer to fall back on that said we did it according to plan. So Mike Vignali is fully aware of it, even though he thought Mike is fully capable of doing what he needed to do.
So I don't think I need to make this a motion, but I will make it a declaration. Can we start talking about this as an agenda item not related to ARPA? So in other words, it's--
It's its own agenda item.
It's its own agenda item, we're moving to do this and we can--
To make it happen.
To make it happen, and we'll just see ARPA with requisitions if we need that, yeah.
We just need surf and turf for dinner, that's all.
And in the plan, I don't care what it looks like, right, but I'd also, I'd like the Chief of Police to weigh in, because when we talk about putting something in the back of a park, it puts hair on the back of my neck up if we can't see in these hidden dark areas what goes on at night, so that just, let's make sure we have that piece of it weighed in on, too.
Yeah, because we would definitely want it lit.
Yep, right.
And there are situations where logging companies will come in and take your logs away for free--
Free, yep.
For the cost of the wood.
Right.
So that's worth exploring as well, but this is part of a larger project that is best done all at once. If we do the paving piece and decide we want a skate park and we need lighting, you have to tear up the pavement to run the wires.
Right.
Yeah, and, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
And since you said it, you said it first, you might have said it before that, I will mention the dreaded phrase, skate park, okay? So people, don't kill me out there in Facebook land because I'm talking about--
Right, we're working on this.
Is, is that needs to be part of--
Yes.
The whole, the whole plan, right, is whether it, whether it goes back to the same spot it was in or moves over, everything's on the table, it needs to be part of the plan because, like Joe was saying earlier with the trees, you don't want to do one thing and forget about the other thing, and then you, you end up having to redo work you did, so it should be part of it, so. But I think you mentioned skate park first, so we're blaming you.
So you can blame me, okay.
And you'll hear this a lot as we go down, it's like the skate park. What is the maintenance program that has to go with it? The costs that have to go with it--
Good point.
God forbid.
So that in 10 years from now, when it does need work done, that there's money associated, so we don't have to go through that again. So it's soup to nuts, including forward-looking maintenance that needs to attach to these.
Yes.
Yeah, like we said, we often are able to give the public stuff, but we never give them the maintenance of--
Correct, and I think they need to own that.
That would be best answered by, and I can't think of the gentleman's name that's been doing--
Paul Murray, yeah.
Yeah, been doing it, he's actually designed and put those in place, so anybody that would know anything about wear and tear, he would be the best to come and talk to us and let us know all about that.
But as we put things like this in place, so goes the maintenance budget with it.
Right.
Yep. Any other questions?
We have somebody that would like to step up real quick, Trish, give you a voice of break.
Make sure you identify yourself.
Diane Morn. If I recall correctly, with ARPA money, if it's over a certain amount, that you may need to do an RFP or go out to bid. So what I would suggest is you use Mike Vignali, he is the town engineer, to work with the Town Administrator to get your RFP together. I think, and do it as a whole plan, maybe you could do pieces of it, but at least you have a whole plan, and then maybe this section gets done one day, one year, this one, the next, and so forth.
Yeah, phase one, two, and three, sure.
Exactly, so that would be my suggestion for the board at this time.
Sounds good.
And again, he's already involved, so that makes it easy.
Yep.
That's another reason why it should be used as a reference for--
Right.
Sounds good.
All set?
All right, so it sounds like we have a plan of attack.
I wrote it down.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Can we, can we just fix the alarm system at the Town Hall? Can we just fix it?
What alarm system?
She just said it's broken.
Trish said it's not working.
Panic alarm system.
Oh, the panic buttons?
Can we just fix that, then?
Maybe we should have the chief talk to it.
I don't even know why this is a thing, like, it should just be fixed, but, I mean--
I had told Trish earlier I could speak upon that. So one of the things we try to do is we try to test the alarm system here, here and there, just to make sure--
Makes sense.
--it's working. The system that you guys currently have is antiquated, surprisingly. It needs to be updated. There's a couple of issues that I found with it on the last test that didn't really sit well with me.
Sure.
Part of changing your cameras and doing the alarm system, panic buttons and all that stuff, and, you know, tempers, as you guys would imagine, with today's day and age, or people are getting more upset, and it's not fair to the ladies and people at work inside this building to be yelled at by residents and different things, and when they need the help, they can't get away from a window to get that help. So I think, you know, updating that would be a safety--
Okay, so it's broken, so to speak. Not working, right, fine. It doesn't necessarily needs an update, but needs to be replaced with newer equipment.
Correct.
So can we include that in the PO that you're going to bring to us with the camera system for the Town Hall?
I can.
Because, I mean, that's pretty, I mean, I don't even, like I said, I don't even know, talk about this, but--
The people, I'm sure that do the cameras, would be able to do that, take a look at it and give us a cost.
Currently, Town Hall uses a different alarm company than we do at the fire station and the police station. Not exactly sure why, but it's a completely different company, so I'll look into that. I don't mind spearheading and kind of helping out with that, just so they're all--
Yeah, I feel we should have like one company do it, so we--
I don't know if we have a contract with a previous company that you guys have now, I'll have to find that out, I don't have that in--
Yeah, if you could find that out, because, I mean, this is, that's pretty silly.
Make a big difference of what gets done, so.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Chief.
I'd like my panic alarm to go to the fire rescue department, because by the time the police come, I'll be dead and needing a medic.
Don't you have one? Don't you have that one that you wear as a necklace?
I know, I was, I've fallen and I can't get up.
All right, trustee of the trust funds, Jim, you wanted to touch base on that?
Yeah, last meeting, we had a candidate proposed, but the board unanimously agreed that part of being, continuing to be transparent, you want it on the website advertised so other people could be made aware and apply if they wanted to. It was about a week late going up, so Diane and I thought it should stay up for the full two weeks, so you'll have a candidate at your next meeting.
Sure.
But we didn't want to deprive the community of an opportunity to sign up.
All right, very good, so we'll put that on the agenda for next meeting, then. Thank you for that. Chief Jewitt, if you would be so kind.
Sure.
Hiring three part-time officers and replacing one full-time officer.
All right, so I kind of give you a little bit of a spiel as far as what we have. Currently, we're down one full-time officer, they left a month and a half ago-ish, we still have not hired that position yet. One of the things I want to ask the board tonight is for permission to fill that, because I desperately need to do that position. One of the other things, we've had retirement of a part-time officer, I've had a couple of the part-time officers leave over the last few years, so we're down on part-timers, and just as a reminder, a part-time officer can only work 1,300 hours a year, so I'm limited, and if they work for another department, that also, that 1,300 hours is combined. So those three part-time offices that work for me work for another agency, so I'm sharing those hours. So what happens is, and it happens almost every year, they're done usually around October, November. I can't use them anymore because their hours are used up. So we, over the last couple of months, have had people come to us and say, hey, are you hiring? And right now, I have three candidates that are-- And right now, I have three candidates that are looking for part-time. What I am asking, or begging, is for the board to give me permission to do my hiring process. And basically, my hiring process is, consists of getting their applications, going through, vetting to make sure that it's somebody that's going to fit our department. Once we figure that out, we have the polygraph, psychological, physical, fitness testing. We have their health screening, we have all the different things. In the past, I've always come to the board on each piece. You guys have asked me, I think, two years in a row, how can you streamline this, how can I go a little bit faster with it? I'm asking you if we, if you'll approve the three part-time, then I come back to you before I give them a conditional offer. Let me just run with it from now until I get them a conditional offer, and then I'll, I'll come to you before I do that.
That really makes sense.
So, when you, when you have candidates, the board will appoint them based on your recommendation?
Correct.
Right, that's what I would want, is your recommendation of candidates, not to bring in a line of people for us to look at.
Right.
Yeah, and for what it's worth, traditionally, since I've been around, that's what we've done, because you know better than we will ever know who you want to work with, so.
I just want to, you know, streamline it, and partially why I need to streamline this faster than I normally do is, they haven't, the state of New Hampshire has not run a part-time academy in a long time. I was afraid that the state of New Hampshire was going to get rid of the part-time academy, and I think there's still talk out there that they may. Currently, there's one part-time academy later on this summer. It takes me months to go through the background checks and do all the stuff, schedule stuff, polygraph, psychological, physical fitness, and all the other stuff that goes with it. So, I need months to do that, and that's basically all I have. So, it's, it's going to add a stress to the background investigators that already have a busy schedule, where we're down a full-time officer. They're just going to have to work a little bit harder to get that done.
So, do we need a motion to put this in place? Then I'd like to offer a motion to accept Chief Jewitt's proposal to, in streamlining the process with the candidates.
Second.
And to hire three part-time and one full-time?
Yeah, that's it. Perfect.
Do we have a second?
So, yeah, I think.
I did second.
A second, so I just, for discussion, you have to share all those hours with all departments, all towns that have the same part-time person, right?
Yeah, so if we have Officer A that works for us and they work for two other departments, you're sharing those 1,300 hours with them. It's not fair to me to say to a new part-time officer, you can only work for me, because we don't, we're not going to pay them enough just to work for us.
Understand that. My selfishness, I'll be there honest, honest about it, but if you're going to put them through the academy, on whose dime?
It's on our dime, and what happens is you usually get a couple of years out of them, and then they realize they're not getting enough shifts, they're not getting enough... Listen, our part-time budget is, going off the top of my head, I think it's $37,000. So, I can go through that pretty quickly.
I understand.
So, they're not getting the hours that they probably want. Most of them, if it's a part-time job, want to really be full-time. So, we try to give them as many hours as we can, they can do details, details also count towards their time.
So, they sign an agreement, so that they'll, they'll stay for a period of time?
We don't usually contract the part-time officers, full-time, we have them sign a three-year agreement that they'll stay, because I got to try to recoup some of the money that we put into them for training and that stuff.
For training, right.
And at no point in time after so many hours on the job, they can convert into full-time, correct? They'd have to go back through the academy.
They have to go back through the academy, and that's happened for the last two or three hires that we've had. We've had a loss, someone was part-time, then we have, they went through the part-time academy, and then two months later, a full-time position opened up, they had to go through the full-time. It's painful.
Okay.
So, you're going to send these three candidates through the academy? These aren't ones that have already been through the academy?
So, two of the candidates that I'm looking at both work in Massachusetts and corrections. So, that's a completely different academy, but they have experience in it, one does not.
Sure.
They both actually, I think, have rank in the departments.
Any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would be unanimous.
Thank you.
Motion is approved. And now, you are going to talk to us about a new cruiser purchase, please.
Just make sure I get the right paperwork in the right spot. As the board's aware, you know, we've, we're, I know, and I'm well aware, we're in a default budget. Unfortunately, the default budget doesn't keep my vehicles from breaking, it doesn't keep things from, you know, not happening to these cars. They're an aging fleet, and I sound like a broken record, I've been up here for the last couple of years saying that we've had an aging fleet. You guys have, you know, told me you understand that, and I know you do. What I did is I went out and I reached out to the company that usually builds our cars for us. In the past, we used to buy a car at a dealership, then you'd have to take the car, find a company. There's one in Haverhill, there's one in, there are a couple of different locations, and they build the cars for you. That's an antiquated way of doing it, in my opinion, at this point. Now, what we do is we buy it from the vendor. The vendor outfits the entire car with a graphics package, lighting package, and everything. One of the things I did just with the graphics is I reached out to several smaller businesses, because I'd like to stay more local with some of the work, but the price was three times as much. So, I went back to the same company that we've been looking at, and they're charging me peanuts to do the graphics. So, what I did is I looked at it, walked through the lot, and I ended up finding a vehicle that was on the lot. It's a leftover 2020 Ford utility, it's a hybrid as well. 2020, I know we're in 2023, it has, I think, 12 miles on it. What ended up happening with it, this was a vehicle I looked at last year, when we were trying to purchase a vehicle last year, it had a safety recall on one of the rear sway bars or something like that, Ford stopped making the part in Massachusetts, and I think nationally, you cannot sell a new car with a safety recall on it. If it was already out on the road, they would have fixed it, but because it hadn't sold yet, they can't. So, that's why they end up sticking up with a, having that vehicle around for so long. Excuse me one second. That it, with the car being a hybrid, we already have a hybrid right now, we're noticing that it's saving probably about a quarter of a tank a week that we're saving, maybe a little bit more. Typically, and I've driven the hybrid through town, if you're under 30 miles an hour, it's on electric. If you step on the gas or anything like that, then the gas will kick in, but it's, it's quite often, it's driving on battery, which is great. And eventually, I'd love to see our whole fleet go to a full-electric, just because you save on the oil changes and everything else, but I know there's a downfall with the battery changes and all that, but.
You can actually sneak up on people, too, because you, you ever been in a parking lot with an electric vehicle coming up behind you, you're like, oh, my goodness?
But, you know, with the, with it being a leftover, they've given us a, they're offering us a little bit of a discount. It's a utility, so we get to save a little bit on gas on that. What we did, and I'm thinking, and Matt, you may be able to answer me best, I think it's been three or maybe four years that we've had the police cruiser and equipment revolving fund. We started that out, I know that this last year, we got, I think, an extra $5,000 was put into it, but usually it's $20,000 a year, I think this year, we did $25,000, that could change that deliberative session. So, currently, I have in that account, there's $95,181. The total for that, for the new car would be roughly $63,051. Being the 20, they're giving us a discount. If I would order a 2023 or a 2024, the 2023 closed out, so if I would order a 2024, it would have been almost $9,000 more. That's how much they've gone up since 2020. So, they locked me in on the original price of, in the 2020 price, and they gave us a discount off of that. So, we have the money in that account, and that's what that account was established for, I think, four years ago. I can give the account number if it helps, it's 993-822-95, and like I said, there's $95,181 in that account. So, my proposal to you would be to buy the vehicle out of that account, just buy it outright, and then we'd own it. I would get rid of one of the other Chevys that needs to go, take any parts out of it that we can. I did ask them today on what a trade-in value was on it, we're looking at between $400 and $600 for a trade-in value, so.
Chevy what?
Impala, four-cylinder.
So, the, you know, the inevitable question, just so you know, when we established that account, this is exactly what we did it for, in the scope, I always say scope, but probably restrictions on that account, purchase of the vehicle, you could use it for maintenance, and the idea was, at some point, you don't want to put good money, good money after bad, right? When, when it's time to give up on a car, the money is in a revolving account, we can use it. So, for anybody out there, we're still in a financial emergency, however, thank you to the voters back in March, put $25,000 more on this, and the, every year, like you said, they've been putting money in, and we, we thank the voters for that, but this is the best way, in, in the, as the chief just said here, let's not continue this whole throwing money into maintenance of these vehicles and, and being more of a drain on a, on a default budget. Let's use this and, and get something that we can, that's an investment.
Exactly, because chief has already come before us, was it like two meetings ago, where you, we went over the two cars that failed inspections? So, we can't, and my point of view is this, that if we're asking men and women to put their lives on the line to protect the people of this community, then we, as a community, need to give them the proper equipment in order to do their jobs, so that we're not further putting their lives in danger by driving and using faulty equipment. So, we need to make this happen, as far as I'm concerned, and the sooner the better.
And, you know, and I, and I will say, just a little, another piece on that, I reached back out to the sales rep and asked him, you know, I wasn't sure if anyone was going to have an issue with it being a 2020. I don't have an issue with it because of the mileage. Yes, it's a little bit older, but that's, that's okay. It's the mileage and the hours are what I'm worried about, more the hours. Currently, right now, if you were to order a 2024, the order would go in, in, later on, in December. They're looking at between 12 and 18 months before you'll see that car.
Yep, yep.
So, if we didn't do something like that, if we didn't buy the leftover, we're not getting another car for, you know, 12, another year, year and a half before we'd see it.
Yep.
Which is a big, you know, that's a concern. I don't think that the cars that I need to replace, I would want to push them as a frontline car for another 18 months.
And what's your delivery time for this one?
I asked for June, they're telling me probably July, only because they're waiting on some parts. If they, some of the stuff they don't have, they've got to wait. One of the big companies we use is Centina, that's the cages in the back, and that's one of the biggest things that they're trying to get, is the cage, and I can't use it without it. There's a few things that would have to, will take a little bit of time. They're really good with trying to help us if I need to get that car done. I won't say the agency's name, but they're the salt of us, and they have a lot of cars. They'll borrow a part from theirs, and when ours comes in, give it back to them, because I think right now, they have 75 they're working on. Their budget's a little bit bigger than mine.
Little.
And I'm sure you know that the process will be, the board would have to write a letter to the trustees of the trust fund, copy of the invoice, and ask them to make the withdrawal from the account. They manage the monies for you, but you are the agents to expend.
So, why don't we get that all typed up, presented to them, so that we can get that letter and get it signed?
I'll take care of that.
Okay, sounds like a plan. And while you're up there, chief, we discussed, instead of going into non-public, you wanted to talk about.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize the police station to buy the cruiser.
The police station, they can't buy anything.
Well, we don't need a motion for that, because they got to do up the letter and stuff first.
I would not generate the letter for you until you've made the decision, so.
We're not going into non-public, if that's what you're talking about.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of a police cruiser for $63,051.
Second for discussion, by the way.
Is that the actual price and nothing else extra?
As far as I know, that's what it should be.
Anything like that?
Shouldn't be anything else.
Because, once you make that motion, that's all the money you're going to get.
Yep.
Well, that's why I said, let's wait till he makes sure he gets hold of that invoice, we can get the letter up and then do the whole thing in one shot.
So, let me, may I make a friendly amendment? You know, and sorry, Robin. Basically, what you said, but let's direct the town administrator to draft a letter to the trustees of the trust fund in order to.
Authorize the purchase of the police, the 2020 police cruiser that he's talking about. I won't put a dollar amount on it.
And the amount that the, at the police chief comes back with.
To be determined later.
Or you could say something like, not to receive.
$65,000.
So, I'm glad this is on tape for Robin for later.
It's not, it's, I, but. I could just say it again, I make a motion to authorize the town to purchase a police cruiser, working with the town administrator, not to exceed $65,000.
I'll second that.
And the funds to come from the trustees of the trust fund.
To come from the police special detail fund?
I didn't have that written down.
Police cruiser and equipment trust fund.
Cruiser and equipment fund.
You ever hear that term when they say too many chefs?
Yeah.
You know, but, but basically, I'm going to still second that, I think we'll be okay.
I'll help you with that tomorrow.
Good luck, Robin.
Jim, you know what I mean.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
The other thing I think you were starting to bring up is, I have an officer that has reached 10 years of service with us. Typically, what happens, back probably in 2016, 2017, the board had come up with a matrix, or in addition to a matrix, that we could offer some longevity for offices to stay. So, one of the milestones was a 10-year, 10 to 15 years, we give them a dollar if they stay for 10 to 15 years. I have an officer now that has reached that, so I was asking the board if that's okay for me to authorize that with the bookkeeper and, and go from there.
So, I'm going to make the motion to authorize that, and then I'm going to ask the question, probably Matt will answer it, why does he need to do that? Why isn't that automatic between?
You make the motion, let's get a second.
Make the motion to.
I'll second.
Matt seconded it, now it's open for discussion.
Yeah, the only thing is, I'm not sure I would want any pay increases to be automatic.
If they're at their 10 years, and that's what was agreed upon.
Yeah, it's, it's not agreed upon from a contractual basis, it's, it's our, it's, you know, without putting the word policy on it, it's our, our.
Standard.
It's a legacy thing that's been in place, it still has to come before us.
Yeah.
Right? Because there's no contractual agreements.
Yeah, so, so it's, to me, I think where you're going, Dan, is, you know, this is.
Might have to go there, too.
This is, you know, something that, I think, 99.9% of the time, we're going to just approve it anyway.
I guess that's where I'm going with it, is like.
But there could be that 0.1% where. Yeah, I, I mean, we're not, shouldn't say not.
I, and I get it, but you can.
If the chief is recommending, then we're probably going to.
Right, I mean, that's, that's, I guess I was trying to, even having the town administrator authorize it, but it's to the point where I'm thinking is, what is the, go past all that. What's the reason that we would say no? Because you have somebody on the board, or three people on the board of a personal vendetta against this one officer, let's just say officer, and they don't want to give them a raise? Do you know what I mean? Like, that shouldn't be part of that. It's his employee, and he is his employee, and then he is our employee, so he should be the one that's like, yep, all right, that's okay with that. That's all I'm trying to do, is some of these things that come before the board is like, and I'm looking at it from a different point of view, but I'm, why? The alarm system, why is that coming to us? Why isn't that just fixed? And this just happens to be one of these things that I think should fall under the town administrator's purview and not ours. And then if we have a problem with it, he's our employee, he's the one who's accountable.
And you would be notified.
Of course.
Right.
You know, I guess that's where I'm going, because what's next? You know, six months, the fire chief's going to be up here and be like, hey, I got these guys at these steps, I'm going to recommend them, you know, and it's.
Not six months, he's watching this on TV.
I'm sure he is.
He'll be here in 10 minutes.
He's already in the car, driving.
Already driving here.
No, I appreciate what you're saying, streamline and the whole thing, right? And I mean, it goes to what we've been talking about, letting the department heads run their departments.
Absolutely.
Don't micromanage them.
You know.
Yeah, it's not a bad thing. I would, you know, I don't want to kind of brainstorm the whole thing here, but it's something.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to bring it up.
You should really put in air on the side of, like you guys say, streamlining it, so.
Can I get a second?
You already got your second.
Already got the second. All in favor?
I.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
So yeah, we can bring that up later and talk about it.
And that's fine, that's, it was just a good spot to discuss it.
Exactly.
I appreciate it, thank you. On a kind of a different topic, too.
Oh, you're feeling real lucky tonight, aren't you?
Well, I want to do my, I want to do a quarterly update, if that's, I don't know if that was on there or not.
Yep.
But I also just want to discuss, too, we may have some opportunities to get another vehicle at a, at a, you know, not a leftover, but it was a vehicle that was purchased by another department that's not going to use the vehicle, that may help us with our maintenance and cost and everything else. You know, and I know ARPA's got some money, there's some different things that we can do to make it work. I just wanted to kind of throw it out to the board and say, hey, you know, we do have an opportunity, if you guys would like me to keep exploring it, I'll continue and come back to you with some more information.
Would you come back to us next meeting with the proposal?
Certainly can, if that's something the board is interested in.
We'd like to hear that.
Yep.
Keeping in mind that this is not going to be coming from the operating budget, because we're in a default situation.
Correct.
Right.
It's an account called Police Special Details, with a balance of about $112,000. That's an appropriate use of that fund. And again, it's not coming from the police operating budget, because he doesn't have it.
Yep.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could explore that with details.
Certainly can, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't wasting your time and.
Yeah, no, that would be greatly appreciated, and you wanted to do your quarterly?
Yeah, I most certainly can. I'll do it as quick as I can, because I know you have other things. Didn't really have an outline for the quarterly update, but I kind of wanted to give you guys a gist of what we've been doing. I know one of the big things near and dear to most of your hearts is Kalia, because Kalia's got a price tag attached to it. Ms. Russo, who is our office manager, thank you, took me a second. She's also our Kalia manager as well. She completed a 12-week certification program a few, about a month and a half ago. So now that she's done that, I've also done one as well. We are in what's called a self-assessment process, so we are looking at our policies, we're looking at the layout of the building, we're looking at cars, we're looking at employees, we're looking at all the different functions of the PD. My goal is to be done, the self-assessment, within probably the next 60 days. And once we can move out of the self-assessment, then we notify Kalia that we've done that, and then we start building our infrastructure of documents that we need to provide to them. I've had a couple discussions with some outside agencies about our self-assessment and finding out where we are. One of the ones that we used to be part of was NEPAC. NEPAC has had a little bit of a re-changing of their, changing of the guards to some new people that I'm not really familiar with, I've talked to some of the older people. One of the challenges I know that I'm going to be facing is with part-time officers. We were able to get around it in the past. I'm not positive if I'm going to be able to get around it this time. And what Kalia is saying is that if you have a part-time employee, they have to be trained just the same as a full-time employee. I don't disagree with that statement, because if I was standing here and I had a part-time employee standing next to me, there's nothing that says that they're not full-time or part-time. You can't tell. So Kalia says that they want all part-time officers to be trained the same as a full-time. There was a workaround that we could do years ago on something like that, I'm not sure if that's still there, I'm trying to explore it. It's one of those things, you got to be careful asking those questions, so I'm working on that. Like I said, hopefully within the next 60 days, we'll be done our self-assessment, but we're moving forward with it. I'm still projecting to, you know, have some goals set for the department to have things done. We, you know, and I'm not using it as an excuse, we always get thrown some type of monkey wrench, I get thrown into it, I lose a full-time officer, we're short-staffed, you know, whatever it may be, but that's all part of it. And I understand that, we just try to keep moving on to get it done. It's one of the things I'd like to see before I retire, is I'd like to make sure that is done, and the department's up and running as it should. National accreditation, you know, it's important to me to see it, A, it's important for you guys, because you get a discount on the insurance and some other stuff, but the national accreditation, it just sets forth some standards that are amazing, and with today's day and age, and I look at it every morning, I look at a website called policewon.com, and I look at all the stuff that's happening across the country, and if, I think if some of these agencies didn't have the policies that Kalia's gotten set forth, they'd be in some big trouble. You know, there are bigger agencies, or out west in, you know, California and that kind of stuff, but all those policies trickle down to us, and then we get these updates, so it really is like, it's a great thing to have. So I look forward to finishing that up.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Since you're on the topic here. If Kalia is requiring you to basically train your part-time like your full-time, then why isn't that handled at the academy?
So Massachusetts did that. Massachusetts has a couple different standards that they have. Massachusetts now has what's called the Bridge Academy. If you're a part-time officer in Massachusetts, you have to go through the Bridge Academy. It's so many hours, I don't know what, I don't want to say what it is, because I'm not positive. They go through and they bridge them to full-time. New Hampshire, I thought, was going to do that same thing, because for, I don't know, maybe a year and a half, we didn't have a part-time academy. This is the first one that's been offered, so I wasn't sure what they were going to do. There's ways that we can get the hours up to match, and I'm trying to find out, does New Hampshire have, what is their requirement for the full-time, and how can I get a part-time to that? So should that be handled at the academy? Yeah, most likely. New Hampshire just reopened its New Hampshire accreditation. We were the last agency in the state of New Hampshire to receive New Hampshire's accreditation back in, maybe 2012. Then they closed it and they just reopened it. So I'm not sure, is the chief that I'm pretty friendly with, that I can ask him to see what they're doing, so.
Yeah, just be curious, if they're requiring that, then how, then how is the academy bridging that for you?
So the academy, it's not really the academy, because accreditation through Kalia is completely separate, and the academies don't require it. I think if they started requiring the accreditation, then they would have to.
Okay. All right, so it's a disconnect, I got it.
It's a disconnect there for sure. Maybe in a few years, they'll get on the same page, but Kalia seems to be kind of a proprietary company doing it. So, any other questions on Kalia?
Mr. Chairman, is it possible that if you wrote a letter, you could obtain a waiver for that particular standard?
That's what we got last time.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if we're going to be able to get that. The guy that I've been dealing with for some time just retired, so I haven't talked to his replacement yet, and I'm trying to work that out and see.
I also think that the economic hardship we're facing right now would make it untenable to pay people to go to full-time to work part-time.
Yeah, yeah.
And be used by other departments.
And currently, I have two part-time offices that are full-time certified, so we do have some. But it, you know, it'd be tough to have only full-time certified officers, because then we might as well not have any part-time.
I can help you with that, Mike.
Thank you.
It goes without saying, too, we've said this before in previous boards, whatever you need help for in obtaining this re-accreditation from Kalia, we're here to help. If that's in the form of consultants that we can bring in, because we are aware of certain organizations that do consulting, then we can talk about that, so we're, just let us know.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
So if we're good on Kalia, I'll move on. I figured that was going to be a topic that you guys wanted to chat about. I labeled this town, just to let you guys know, I've applied for a couple grants, you guys are aware of it, we applied for a body camera grant. Last year, we were awarded the money. As I said last time, when we got the grant, we don't have the money to buy them. I'm short probably $60,000, plus the, with, including using the grant, I'd be short $60,000. The money's there, we have it, I'm trying to find some other avenues. If ARPA had hundreds of thousands of dollars, they still couldn't help us, you can't use federal funds and state funds and mix them together, they won't allow it. It has to be from a line item. So we don't have it in the line item this year. I'm trying to reach out to the person who's in charge of the grant to see if I can get that for next year, hold it, and then add that in. Just wanted to kind of give you where I am with that. We did get awarded the money, I just can't use it. The other thing I did was I, in, when I say I applied for a grant, these aren't like tens of thousands of dollars, the grants. I applied for this grant, was a bicycle safety helmet grant. The state of New Hampshire offers it every year, they were able to give us, I think we got a couple dozen bike helmets, I try to do it every year. I went up to Concord, picked up the bike helmets, and what we do is, we're going to have like a bike rodeo where we can pass out the helmets to the kids in town, just for, you know, the kids to have safe helmets, updated helmets. Last year, when I passed it out, I, we lost, all the helmets went out, like almost instantly. You know, I see kids driving their bikes around all the time, I usually have a couple in the truck and, you know, hand them out, like, here you go, you need a helmet. So we did get that, we did get some helmets. One of the other ones that I applied for, or re-enrolled in, is the Body Armor Program. I've been doing that one for probably five years now, that we apply for Body Armor for our vests, they're expensive, they're only made for one person, you can't really transfer them to somebody else. So, you know, with the cost of the vest, this kind of offsets the cost of them, so they, the state and federal, there's some money mixed, I think, from both, that we use for the Body Armor Grant. So we'll re-enroll in that, I don't know what we're going to get from it, but we should get, hopefully, some money. The other one that I kind of, prosecution, I figured that would be something that you guys might be interested in knowing a little bit about what we've been doing, and it's not so much just the prosecution portion of it, it's a little bit more. I believe I was here probably in February, might have been the end of January, and I was telling the board that we got inundated with sexual assaults and some other cases that were coming in. We got really busy with them. Currently, we have six, four sexual assaults, one aggravated sexual assault that's going out. So there's five sexual assaults in total that are out. I have, under theft cases for embezzlement from businesses, I have a total of three of them, with a total loss of over $200,000 that we're investigating. So these aren't, the embezzlement ones are, they're, you know, they were theft embezzlements, whatever it may be, but $200,000 isn't, those are pretty good-sized cases. It's not like someone stole, you know, a package of cigarettes from the store. So these, these investigations have taken some time. We've had several property thefts from businesses, property destruction, we've had plenty of that kind of stuff. We're dealing with one, we had one in court today for property destruction, that was a pretty significant case. I didn't put into speeding cars and all that stuff, you guys know that we have speeding cars, we have the radar trailer out, it's been deployed to help slow cars down. This is our busy season when it comes to cars. If you haven't noticed, I have, we have somebody burning out throughout town in a bunch of different spots. I don't want to say too much about it, I don't want to be the one on Facebook, I don't have social media, so, but somebody's been doing it, I have a good idea on who's doing it, so we're trying to curve that from continuing. It doesn't look good if you live in the neighborhood. I'd encourage people to call us if it's happening, get, if they can give me a description, give us a description of what the car is, you know, we know what streets it is, it's Pond Street, it's the end of Thornell, it's the end of West Main, you know, it's, but that needs to stop. You know, 20 years ago, it wasn't acceptable, but it was a little bit more acceptable than it is today. We have nice homes here in town, and people don't need to look out their window and hear that and see that. I understand that I was a kid at once, too, but it just doesn't look good. The other one I kind of did a quick thing on was the budget. I understand we're in the default budget, as everybody does, I sound like a broken record. One of the things that we're trying to do is, obviously, and I, I kind of pride myself on it, is I try to save the department money and I try to save the town money. I think some of you have called me cheap. I'm not sure which one.
Frugal.
Frugal, is that what it was?
Frugal.
I thought I heard cheap.
No.
One of the things, you know, that we can do at the PD to save a little bit, our electric bill is through the roof. I'm getting a quote right now to switch some of our outlets to motion sensors to help save some. We have 52 lights inside the building, if you turn them on and you go out to a call, you forget them on, so I want to put a lot of them on motion if we can. I know it's kind of a simple thing, but it's something that I think would help save some electricity, save, put the bill down a little bit. Maintenance on the cars, one of the things I looked at is, we can go, we, you know, change, everyone recommends change your oil at 3,000 miles, we're going to push that out to 5,000 to 7,000. We do use a fully synthetic oil, so it's okay. It kind of pains me to do it, only for the fact that if the cars are running on the side of the road, I really don't want to burn out components of the vehicle to save money, but oil changes aren't cheap. So if I can, you know, get a little bit more out of it, we're going to try that out and see what the oil looks like when we go to change it next. One of the other things that we've been trying to do, and we've had some offers from in-town, I don't want to say where, but we've been hosting training. So if we host training for law enforcement, and typically all, our training is only for law enforcement, if we host it, we get free spots. That's, and some of these trainings are expensive. You might spend $700, $800 for a week-long training, but if I can host it, I can usually get two or three spots for free. So we've been hosting, there was a, a community building in town that was gracious enough to let us use it for some training, so we got some free spots coming up. We've also been going to more free training, just to kind of keep the cost down, just because I never know what's going to be around the next corner. If I have an officer go out because they're hurt or something like that, I'm going to go through line items quicker than I expected, so I'm trying to save as much money as we can, holding off, but at the same time realizing that I still need to give the officers training. That's one of our biggest tools that we can have is training. The governance office has also issued that we do more training, so that has a cost associated to it.
Of course.
So it's, you know, we're trying to save money where we can, but at the same time, we still have a department, I still have a department to run, I still have offices that need training, and we need to have good equipment. So we're trying to do what we can. If someone can come up with something else that I can do to help out, please let me know. But, you know, for the most part, I try to be frugal if I can, and try to make things Pretty much all I have for you. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Chief Jewitt, that was.
That's enough, and I will add, you know, the town report, which is available in print and on the PDF, take a look at the police department budget sometime, especially before you vote again, and you'll see, you used the word frugal, you'll see what we're up against. You know, there's, there's, it's a very lean budget, and quite obviously, we're in a default with everybody, like you said, but they, they do a lot for the town with the limitations they have, is what the fact is, so.
I thank you, Chief.
And it's greatly appreciated. Thank you, chief. All right, we're going to move on, we have some motions to be made.
Uh-oh.
Staff reports? Am I staff?
Okay, yep.
Okay. Just to bring you up to date, stewardship committee has scheduled a meeting on Hidden Acres down on Thornell, but the rail report is conservation. So just so that you know, we've had some pretty horrific graffiti going on, on some of the conservation property. Chief Jewitt actually helped us with some of it a while back, had to spray paint to get it off the trees, it was very inappropriate, racial, sexual, and then we recently had it done again, and fortunately, one of the significant others of one of our EMTs went of one of our EMTs went down and helped us spray paint and remove that. We also have large vehicles entering the peanut trail. We've ordered signs. We've got some issues on the peanut trail opposite the old fire station on the Merrimack side of the street, so Merrimack side of 108. There are no motorized vehicles that are supposed to be going in there. I've had a property owner confront me that he was going to go after the town because people are going on his property. So we've got an issue there. We've asked for an engineer to come and just survey what we own at the, at the road's edge so that we can actually put up fencing across the road and leaving a gate open for about 36 inches for pedestrian traffic. And obviously about 100 feet in, we're going to have to pay for that. We also are back to the bush farm again, working our invasive weed specialist, Loreen Melvin does an unbelievable job. So we are back to eradicating our Japanese knotweed. We do this on our own. There's only six of us on this committee. We've only got 100 square feet left to get rid of at the entrance to our bush farm. Last year, we found a zoo that would actually take it because the giraffes evidently eat it, but none of us had a truck to get it down to the zoo. So we might attempt that again this year. We've got a culvert at the bush farm that is now dangerous, so we're working on fixing that. In the past, we've been able to do it ourself. We might have to hire out, so I'll let you know on that. And we've ordered new signs for the peanut trail that say no motorized vehicles, hoping this will deter people. And we've added at the suggestion of Chief Jewitt, Jewitt, no, please take notice on the bottom of it. So that's a quick conservation report. EOC, I'm just wondering the status, and I can check with Jim on this. We, the EOC has to purchase some storage cabinets for some of our supplies, and I need a file cabinet, and I don't have any money. So as soon as the signed money gets deposited into that emergency revolving fund that was established on March 14th, I'll be able to get that. And I think that's it.
Let us all give you our shark look when you said you, you have no money.
I have no money.
Do you know where they're getting in on the peanut trail?
Yeah, we do. We think we know who it is too. Yeah, we're, we're probably going to buy game cameras so that.
You're going to need a lot of game cameras, because we talked about it last meeting, where you need them too.
Yes, exactly. But we kind of have an idea, well, we're pretty sure we have an idea who it is, so we're working on that. But it's too bad. I realize people love the land and they get out there and they want to play and that's great, but the damage that they do, it's very, I mean, you know what our budget looks like, $3,200. We can't do a lot with that. And we volunteer, we do all the mowing. We, we, matter of fact, we had a firefighter, I neglected to mention, that actually went down on the trolley trail for us and cut, cut up a tree that had fallen and we couldn't get into it, and it was too big for us to manage it. So fortunately, he went down just within the last month and took care of that. But it's tough and people in TV land, you know, we've got great property. If you use it appropriately, everyone benefits and it's safer that way. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. All right, so now we will move on. The resignation of our bookkeeper. Jim, you want to touch base on that real quick?
Yes. The bookkeeper has been with us approximately two and a half months, and she's going through some personal things that are taking up more of her time during the workday. So she has offered her resignation effective June 1st, and she'll remain accessible to whoever takes her place to help if she can.
So I would move to accept the resignation of finance specialist Melinda Stanley with our thanks and gratitude.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the commercial lease for over, at our property by the, actually it is, the police station, right?
We need.
We have a tenant. You want to?
Yeah, the tenant keeps an eye on the police force, which is basically, but for those who don't know the history, we inherited the tenant when we, when we purchased the property. He's been there, I think, 30 years plus. So he's a very good tenant, past boards have really made it known that if, if they were ever to move out, the likelihood of us taking on a new tenant is probably not a good one with all the work we'd have to do. So it's, it's a good relationship, which we're required under the statutes. We can't give a lease for longer than a year unless we go to town meeting with it. So typically, this has been the same lease we've used since I've been on the board and...
And he's helped the town out too?
Yeah, when, when we've needed the services of, of the, of an engineer for different things. So my, my recommendation is, and I'll make a motion to sign a new one-year lease with civil construction management in the amount of $10,200 to be paid for the term of the lease for 8B Merrimack Road.
Second.
Seconded by Joe.
And the only other thing I'll add is, as voters, we all see this every year on the Warren article, when we vote to take the money out of the revolving fund and put it into, I always forget the name of, I think it's the town buildings, or no, the 8 Merrimack Road.
It's called Engineering and Renovation 8 Merrimack Road.
8 Merrimack Road. So the money is available to us to reinvest in the buildings for repairs and stuff.
All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Requisition, ARPA 07 and 08. So these, both of these requisitions are attached to the rescue boat that was purchased from, by ARPA for the fire department and if the police so needs it. One of them is for lettering to be done to it, and the other one was the remainder balance that was partially due to the, for the motor of the boat. So would anybody like to make?
I'll make, I'll make a motion. Motion to sign requisition, ARPA-2023-007 for the balance of the rescue boat provided by North Atlantic Inflatables, Inc. in the amount of $1,500, funds to come from ARPA.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Move to sign requisition, ARPA-2023-008 for the installation of the lettering on the rescue boat provided by North Atlantic Inflatables, Inc. in the amount of $875.09, funds to come from ARPA.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Letters to the trustees of the trust funds. This is moving to simply instruct them to deposit the money that was agreed on during the meeting on March 14th, 2023, and then to go into the engineering and renovation capital reserve fund.
I'll make a motion.
Yep.
Move to sign a letter, to sign a letter to the trustees of the trust funds, instructing them to deposit $10,200 per town meeting vote on March 14th, 2023 into the engineering renovation capital reserve fund.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
And there's a few of them that are here that basically are the same thing that was voted to do.
Move to sign a letter to the trustees of the trust funds, instructing them to deposit $50,000 per town meeting vote on March 4th, 2023 into the town building capital reserve fund.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Move to sign a letter to the trustees of trust funds, instructing them to deposit $25,000 per town meeting vote on March 14th, 2023 into the police cruiser and equipment capital reserve fund.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to sign a letter to the trustees of trust funds, instructing them to deposit $50,000 per town meeting vote on March 14th, 2023 into the fire apparatus and equipment slash refurbishment capital reserve fund.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to sign a letter to the trustees of trust funds, instructing them to deposit $25,000 per town meeting vote on March 14th, 2023 into a new account to be known as the Town Cistern and Fire Pond Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to sign a letter to the trustees of the trust funds, instructing them to deposit $5,130 per town meeting vote on March 14th, 2023 into the Skateboard Park Expendable Trust Fund.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have the tax bill warrant was presented to us.
Do we need a motion on that as well?
Yes, we do.
Motion to sign the tax bill warrant for the first half of tax year 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Discussion real quick, that's just a matter of the taxes that were assessed to the properties in the town.
Right. It's not new rate, nothing like that.
Exactly. It's everything that was already.
Get excited.
Yeah, predetermined. It's just a formality of having to go through and sign it. So all in favor?
Aye.
And, letter to the bank to close out the timber bond.
Move to sign a letter to Nautschor Bank, instructing them to close out Timber Bond for Fred Leclerc, Leclerc and Sons.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're on to manifest. Actually, any, yeah, we can do manifest for now. Joe, keep going.
Move to sign vendor manifested May 4th, 2023 in the amount of $8,530, yeah, $853,370.91, of which $755,032 goes towards the June 2023 Sanborn Regional School District payment and $81.25 goes towards ARPA.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to sound cable revolving fund vendor manifested May 4th, 2023 in the amount of $6,402.2.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to sound, to sign police special detail vendor manifested May 4th, 2023 in the amount of $253.15.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to sound, to sign payroll manifest for pay period April 23rd through May 6th, 2023 with a pay date of May 11th, 2023. Total payroll is $73,187.39, which includes $733.79 in ARPA administrative costs.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
One more, Joe.
Move to accept the public meeting minutes dated May 2nd, 2023 as written.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Joe.
We didn't talk about these.
Okay, so we're going on to items for new business and old business.
Just saying.
Yeah?
We didn't talk about the picnic tables or the grills.
We were going to get, we did.
We didn't authorize anything for them. We authorized the cameras and stuff like that, but we didn't.
We're going to come back with some pricing.
Yeah, they're going to come back to us with that.
We're going to get three bids.
Yeah. Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, no problem. They're going to come back to us next meeting with that. Okay, so selectmen goals and objectives.
I basically put this on because in keeping with what was done in the past, I think we ought to have goals and objectives. Basically, the goals and objectives that were adopted by the previous board of selectmen for the 2022 to 2023, I think we ought to build upon those and regularly monitor against those.
Yeah, and I think we talked about last meeting, as homework, we'd come back with our list. And the, the no-brainer that I would include on that list would be, you know, the warrant said the code of ethics policy to update that, so I had Diane send that out. And I, I will volunteer to collect any changes people have, so the best way to do it, I think, is for everybody to mark it up. If you can do it in Word with track changes, that's the best, but if you have to print it out and mark it up with a red pen, that's cool too. And just, if you feed them to me, I'll make the updates on the main thing, the main draft, and we can get that draft around and discuss it as necessary and try to come up with a draft to approve down the road. So I would, I would like to add that as kind of objective one, since that comes right off the warrant.
I have another one, and it goes under what I've been saying for, well, probably better part of maybe two years, under culture change. And I have those under both seen and unseen. And I think we've seen, under, under unseen, I think, I have policies and procedures which will allow and enable the town of Newton and its departments to seamlessly function, to deliver services to us citizens. Right now, a lot of that is in process with a lot of the things that are going on, which is really a great, great start, but I think we really need to, to do that, you know, to do, to refine that a little more. Communications is a big thing right there, where we need to communicate better amongst the departments with things that are going on to make sure everyone's on the same, everyone's on the same page and everybody knows basically what the left hand knows what the right hand is doing. So that's one of those things. And that's my unseen. I actually, on the unseen, I has future growth tied into the master plan and capital improvement plan. We need it. We don't have it right now. We should set a timeframe for it because a lot of what we need to do is based, will be based upon that.
Well, the future growth, so you know, that is being worked on with what is taking place right now with the master plan. The planning board has, well, we as a board have agreed to the gentleman that came before us.
Sam.
Three meetings ago, I think it was, to present, to be able to, with the grant in order to do an assessment.
Yeah, that's in process right now. The agent, the agent.
And that's exactly dealing with what you're talking about, to move the master plan forward between that. And then Jen, in her company, the, they have been given a grant that they are working on to where they're doing about housing and all of that with that ability for affordable housing, where we might be able to change some of the ordinances to maybe make it a, a little bit easier to be able to fulfill that need of affordable housing.
Just one point, it's good to have goals, but we don't have to solve the goals tonight.
Right. But I'm just saying, so that is in action, and just so the town knows about. So that's what, that is happening now.
Yeah, another one I have is under, under seen. Town buildings, library, transfer station, safety complex, town beach, Greeny Park, the Marshall House, with respect to appearances, both inside and out, landscaping, signage. We have some gems in town. We really need to let people be aware of them. And, and also with the same thing, what our, and we already talked about it, our, our police, our police vehicles to make sure that they have, you know, they're, they're safe and everything. So that's just a couple of things that I have on my list.
All right. Well, we need to get money to be able to do that.
Yeah, kind of.
I have over here, working within our budgetary constraints as well.
Kind of, the way I see the goals, and I think some of those, Joe, fall into this, some of them might not, is I, I don't want to do somebody else's job that they already have, right? So it's, it's more of focusing on something that we as individual board members can kind of shepherd and kind of see through.
I think if we have a list, we can narrow it down at some point in time to, you know...
Right, exactly. But what I'm saying is.
So let's build a list.
Is you mentioned the police cruisers and stuff and, and that.
It has to be worked on.
Right, exactly. By the police department. I wouldn't want to touch that.
Oh, no, no, not, not saying that. I'm just using it as an example.
You want to be broader.
Broader, but also not stepping on toes, you know what I mean? Like, if, the code of ethics policy, that's our job, right? So we can do that. The, I'm trying to remember what ones we had last year, but another one that came to mind is the, the Boston Post Kane. We haven't done anything. Haven't done anything in years. So if, if one of us wanted to take that on and ensure, you know, that we keep the tradition and, like, that could be one to get that back.
Could I read just what we, what you put on for last year?
Sure.
You had put on last, or the previous board put on, each board member to complete the New Hampshire MA budgeting workshop. Number two, to develop a strategy for the future of town buildings. Three, to host quarterly meetings with department heads and selectmen, and I think Jim has already undertaken that with the department heads, and I think it's providing some good, some good results so far. Reach out to the residents and ask them what they want, regularly informed meetings where residents can speak to the board. And I think we're doing that by offering our public comment on the, but I'd like to do a little more outreach on that and stuff like that and maybe, I don't know. Just one of my things, just maybe get involved in some of these people's Facebook pages so they see what they're saying, if any questions come up or something like that, you know? they see what they're saying, if any questions come up or something like that, you know?
Well, I'm not gonna sit there and deal with the internet and Facebook and whatever, because it's just too easy for people-
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying, yeah, I'm not saying, no.
But I'm looking, I'm looking to try to put out and maybe a little further out there in the paper or whatever, to try to hold another town meeting, that maybe we can get some residents down here, and maybe pick another Saturday to where-
But it wouldn't be a town meeting, I know what you're saying.
Not a town meeting, a town gathering, to be able to come and to give their inputs about what they like, what they don't like, what they're seeing, and what they're not.
And to be fair, 'cause I still think it's a good idea, and I put it in the town report, and I'll say it, I wanna say it as many times as I can, is we did that, and how many people showed up, Bob?
My wife and my granddaughter.
Exactly, so they can meet with you anytime. So we are like extending our hand, right? If we have public comment at the beginning of the meetings, we have Zoom, we have cable, the agenda goes out, by statute, it's 24 hours, right? You can sign up to get the agenda sent right to your email. We have YouTube, so if you don't, can't be here, you can watch it on YouTube at your desk. I've done that a few times, God help me, I've lived it twice. I do it the next day, too. So we are extending our hand.
Maybe what we could do is-
People aren't taking it.
Take a booth at Old Home Day.
Yeah, we could.
Why don't we?
Yeah.
There's a night.
We've done that one.
We could make a lot of money, I think.
We can help raise money for the new dog, for the new dog.
So I don't think it's a bad idea to do another one of those, Bob?
I almost would put it in the Carriagetown this time.
That's what I'm saying.
Town of Newton invites you to, you know what I mean? It's short blurb, and just put it in there, and then maybe he'll have more than just his family show up.
But if nobody, if nobody shows up, then-
This will be the last time.
That'll be the last one.
It's the last hurrah.
The problem is the timing on it, that's the whole thing, we're coming up for vacations now and stuff like that.
So, I know, there's almost never a good time.
Maybe the fall is a good time.
Do it right after the tax bills go out in December.
Oh, my goodness, that would be a good one, yeah. And I'm not available that day.
No, I think it's a good start if we just, you know, and get a list put together and refine it, so.
Anything else from anybody else?
Anybody else have any ideas?
I mean, he hits, it's pretty broad when he says all the buildings, I'd like, you know, almost, I know we're in a default, but I would like, one of our goals is to like, get all of the buildings and departments on the same page. And when I say that, I don't mean communication, I'm talking about the chief saying that the fire department and the police department have a different alarm company than the town hall. And that's what I mean, is that like, and Trish is working on it, but the cameras, they all need to be on the same thing. Not, I have to go to this one to see this camera, and this one, I'd like to see it all centralized, so we don't have to do that type of stuff.
We discussed something at ARPA yesterday, and it was told that we already have that document somewhere from the various departments, in terms of the buildings, and I think Jim was gonna research it at some point in time.
Yeah, I just, I don't like that. I have experience in multiple things, and to have it one for everything is so much easier going forward, like, it's really, really easy when you have one for everything.
Just centralize it.
So like, if Jim needs to have something fixed at the police department, he doesn't need to say, hey, what model do you, what, who are you using for this? And it should be the same for this building as he's using for that building, you know what I mean? And that's, I guess, where I'm going, is, and I don't know if it needs to be a goal, 'cause he hit it in the buildings thing, but everything should be the same. And it's a lot easier to get things done that way.
Probably more cost-effective, too, I would imagine.
And the only thing with that is, is you are, sometimes your hands are tied by the contract.
And I get that, I do, but-
But it's a question-
We can move forward as the contract's up, be like, okay, we're done with this, we're gonna go forward with the seven buildings, or whatever we have, right?
Right, but what I'm saying is, all of those contracts come to us. So in other words, if we keep that in our mind, every time we're looking at a IT contract or a-
A renewal or whatever, sure.
Cell phone renewal.
Make sure that, okay, before we sign this, who has this?
Exactly.
Let's, okay, so that's fine.
You just hit on something that I asked a question on last year, and I didn't really get a good answer, but I don't think I got the answer anyway.
Well, that's 'cause you asked it, Joe.
Probably, but I mean, I kept asking the same question over and over, well, you get tired of getting beat up, you know? No, cell phones, what do we have for cellphone service? Do we have one company, do we have two companies, do we have three companies? If we have one company, it would seem that we would get a better deal, maybe.
Yeah.
But that's one of those-
Yes, and then I see where that goes, though, because the fire department has their, in their budget, then you would take in all of the cellphone budgets and put it in one building, and I can see where that would go. But I agree with having the same company, you know?
Can I also add, if we're gonna look at buildings, and we have all this wonderful stuff, you know, is there any buildings that can be retired?
All of them.
Except for fire, they all retired.
I don't mean retired, I mean, we're not replacing it.
And they stayed on the job.
Yeah, they all live the usefulness.
I mean, we're not replacing it, right? We have some buildings that are collecting a lot of dust, and we're paying money, so to retire a building, and I don't need to go and do something else, but I can take whatever's in there and put it in other buildings within?
Right.
And we can remove that expense, I'm all for that as well. And I don't know if that's possible.
So these are all things that we can look at and look into?
So do we, so when we did this last year, what we did is we kinda came up with the definitive list and put it in the minutes, and put a name next to each thing.
I have my list right here.
I don't think I'm ready to do that, I think we should almost do something on the SharePoint.
Yeah.
One document on the SharePoint.
I like it, yeah.
Throw it on there, we can adjust it and move it how we want it, and then bring it here and load on it, or however you wanna do it, but I think it should be something on the SharePoint for us to be able to manipulate.
So if we start with Joe's list-
Sure, that, exactly.
And I have at least one to add, and you guys can add, and then we take a look at it at the next meeting, so two weeks, I think it's two weeks, two weeks from tonight.
I don't know, mine got canceled, so I don't think we're having it.
Oh, that's true, yeah, we got a cancellation notice, so we don't have to go. No, you can't take it back. But the, but we can go through it real time in the meeting and say, table this one, or this one.
Sure. I just, I think it'd be better to have a list we can manipulate on SharePoint before that meeting, that way we're a little bit more-
I like it, I think that's a good goal.
Sounds like a plan.
I like it.
With that being said-
I'll make a motion.
All good things must come to an end.
All good things must come to an end, as my brother down the end just said. I am going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:42.
Second.
Thank you, everybody, for your time and your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the previous guy-